All right. Get started. Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council Early Work Session. Today is July 22. It is 6:06 PM. As the record shows, all council members are present, except for Mr. Cox. We are going to receive a presentation on special revenue funds and follow-up discussion on general fund budget for this year 2025-2026. Thank you, Mary.
I'm going to start with the debt service fund. So we, you know, our goal is to stay in our debt service percentage at about 14 to 16 percent. Our current budget, our current, our estimate is, sorry, our estimate for 2025 is a little, it's about $30,000 more than, for principal payments than what we had budgeted originally. And that was because we were in the process of issuing the tax note during the budget process and $30,000 did not, of the principal value, did not get included in the budget. We are planning on, you know, issuing 2025 certificates of obligation. So for the 2026 budget, we have what Phil Todd provided us as an estimate of our first year payment. But that can also change as we finalize our issuers. And so just as a reminder, the 2025 certificates of obligation is funding the Highland Shores Boulevard and the Highland Village Road reconstruction. Issuing $7.7 million, $75,000. The purple in this graph represents a future potential issue for some parts and street and facilities that were discussed during our CIP. The next group of funds is the municipal court, special revenue funds. One of them is the technology fee. So for this fund, we collect a $4 fee per citation that is restricted to be used for the technology fee. And so right now, we are using it for video magistrate for municipal court or judges, or two judges. And then for the building security fund, we collect $4.90 per citation. And we typically kind of build up the balance and then make a purchase as needed for the building security. So part development fees. So when a developer comes into the city, we typically collect some part fees. It's been, you know, not a whole lot of activity last few years. But we are expecting Magnolia Village having 25 residential units. So for 2026, we're going to be potentially collecting community part fees and neighborhood part fees in the area for.
Are those called our impact, oh, those are park impact fees?
Your part fees, yeah.
Okay. So there, but are they, do they pay them at time of destruction for the subdivision or at time of building permit for the building?
I think the final plan review is when they pay.
Is that right? Because I thought impact fees weren't due until the building permit. I'm just saying, because if it's at building permit, then it's, we're at least 12 months away, would you say?
Yeah. Autumn told me it was at the time that they finalized the plan for the park fees.
Maybe, maybe it's how. I think for the parks, the park fees, I think that is correct.
It's water waste.
Okay.
So, you know, we keep a balance of, you know, where our, you know, with the fund balance, where those neighborhoods, the amount of money that we need to restrict in those particular neighborhoods. This is public safety. We have various grants or just contributions or sponsorships. We just keep it all in one fund so that we can account for the expenditures and revenue. Our biggest thing for the police department is the Texas Hall MPD sponsors. You know, as, now we run an event and we collect funds from sponsors and donations and contributors and we will, you know, net out our expenditures and send them in that event. And then we have also MPD, this child safety fees that is to help pay for the crossing guards. We get approximately about $19,000 a year. It's, since it's related to salaries, we just transfer in the money from the general fund and, or, you know, transfer it out. Then we have peg fees. Peg fees are fees that we collect from our cable providers. It's restricted for the use of broadcasting our council meetings. And so we are collecting, we anticipate to collect $16,000 next year. We have identified a few capital items related that we funded by the peg fees. And it's the training room upgrades for $18,000 and the HVTV bulletin board and programming schedule system for $9,000.
Your budget was $21.48 for '25. Year-to-date, it says 26, but I think you meant 25, is $10,000. Is that because we haven't collected?
Yeah.
There's a bigger collection at the end of the year or what?
There's a lag. They give us quarterly payments. So our last payment was probably just for the first two quarters of our current year.
So the next payment will be for the last two quarters?
Our next payment will be the third quarter. And then we get the fourth quarter like around November.
So that's half, I guess. Do we have a backup plan? Because this is only for people who have cable, correct? Or is it, so I guess we're going to continually see it go down?
Yeah.
So is there a backup plan or is it just? Because cable subscription, I think now is, I think, less than half of people have them. So I just wanted to know if we have a plan B.
That would probably just have to be funded through the.
Okay.
We've also looked to make our purchases last us a long time.
Okay.
The equipment that we're upgrading here in the training room, we have since 2013. And what were the HVTV bulletin boards since 2015. So we're really trying to purchase things that will last us that 10-year lifespan, knowing that this money is dwindling.
Okay.
And banking it while we can.
And then should be totally fine. So we are going to, last year, we raised the rate by 40 cents last year. We did that in January, February timeframe. I think we had budgeted last year to a year at that new rate. So we're going to be a little bit under budget on the drainage fees related to implementing that rate in January instead of October. Professional fees on the expenditure side includes the bond maintenance service contracts for $30,000. Concrete driveway and sidewalk replacements for $18,000. And then various tree mitigations for $10,000 and then engineering engineers.
There's some various tree mitigations.
Tree mitigations are in public right-of-ways, drainage easements, and drainage utility took care of the wooded area on adjacent to FM 24.99.
And so the other category includes drainage maintenance. The balance on that account is $131,000. What's included in that for this year is a cleanup wooded area to establish a browse line adjacent to FM 24.99 for $50,000. This is the second of two, I guess, years of budgeting this for total $2.500,000. And we have vegetation control and dredging for $25,000. And mosquito control for $36,000 and erosion control for $20,000. And it also included in other is $38,000 for collection system maintenance.
That software upgrade? Software upgrade? The collection system maintenance, is that a?
No.
Like collections like water collecting or collections like money collecting? Okay. So it's like things collect, okay.
What's involved with the mosquito control?
Our mosquito abatement program is capturing, testing mosquitoes for West Nile virus, only West Nile.
And then for capital, we have a 2026 mini loader included in the equipment replacement schedule for $31,000. As I mentioned, last year, we increased our rate from 1.40 to 1.80. That's big cents and happened in January. As you can see in the fund balances, our fund balance is dwindling. So we may consider next year discussions about potentially increasing it again. I was looking at a 30 cent increase, which would average $1.28 increase over per each residential. That would be something we would discuss in next year's budget.
Heather, Scott, how is 30 cents per impervious square foot? How do we, how do we get $1.28 out of that? That's on the resident, right?
We had a calculated, that's four square feet.
GSI folks.
Isn't that 1,000 square feet?
Shouldn't be per 1,000.
Per 1,000.
Okay, okay.
Going into capital projects fund, and concentrate on streets projects beginning. So right now, we have the 2021 bond issue. And then we will potentially, we'll have, if we issue the bonds, street project, or the 2025 certificates of obligation. And so our plan is to spend $6,800,000 between those two issues in 2026. And it's going to be, you know, our phase three of our 2022 street reconstruction. And then we talked about the Highland Shores Boulevard, the Highland Village Road reconstruction. Then we have some dredging drainage projects coming up as well. Did that change removal of that? And has it been updated with removing?
That's an insignificant cost reduction for the project.
Then, well, next, we'll look at the parks projects. So right now, we just have the 2021 bond issue. And with that is, you know, a lot of the pilot Noel projects, as well as the brass's athletic field renovations and some unity park projects. So the total that we will expect to expand next year would be 4.8 million.
Did we approve, I thought we didn't approve the pilot Noel stuff yet, have we?
Did we?
No.
Missed that memo? Okay, I'm just, sorry.
Please hold.
Just checking.
And then we have the 2024 tax note. We identified a few equipment replacements. We had modified or added in the portable radios. Also adding in a compact excavator for the drainage fund. And then we had, we're going to defer the loader that's in the streets department and purchase a dump truck for the drainage department, for the, yeah.
Scott, what are they retaining, baskets, any of them?
It's an erosion control project around two ponds. Started with two ponds, then it shrunk to one pond. And then with the material costs and inflation, it's to do one pond is a little over 1.2 million. So we're looking at scaling it back even further, just doing north side of north pond. Adjacent to the dog park.
These are the concrete outlets and inlets into the ponds?
Other than the gaming basket is basically.
Oh, the big screen?
Yeah, it's like a, like a chain link fence coated.
Yeah.
In squares or rectangles and fill them with rock.
Goes around the exterior.
And it stabilizes.
So well. Yeah, okay. And that's just for the north side of the north pond?
Plan as to do around both ponds. There's already, there's an old project there now on the primary middle school side. Once you get down closer to the water's edge, it needs more attention. The money's not there to do everything we need to do. Over time, we'll look before we get it done.
Todd, did you have, did you have a question?
No, I just, I was just trying to see if all the numbers added. Some of them were pushed into 2027.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I think I've finished my point on it. So our next slide would be, we're adding a supplemental for $30,000 for the drainage.
So you saw in the budget, there was a mini loader. This request is for a mini micro excavator, really. So if you talk to a resident that has a drainage easement in their property somewhere and they need some drainage attention, the first thing out of their mouth is going to be destruction. We call it demolition. So that's what the thing on words there. When you see a construction troop coming into your property, it creates a lot of anxiety in the residence. See the city guys coming in. And of course, most of it's at their request. The anxiety is still there. What are they going to destroy? What are they going to do? What's it going to look like? They don't, they don't have the vision. So the bigger equipment that we have is, causes us to remove demolition demo fences, possibly some trees, ornamental stuff, to try to get in there. Several years ago, we purchased a micro loader. It fits through fence gates. You can maneuver around trees pretty good. They're light enough where they don't destroy sidewalks. And sometimes you could say landscaping. So this is a picture of a micro excavator that we to reestablish that swell in a person's backyard. So our bigger equipment, even, even the mini excavator is too large to get in there with the swing. You either have to take down fence panels or demolish that retaining wall to do the excavation. And this is another residential property. See a two-tiered retaining wall with trees. And we had to kind of snake around reestablish the swell to get the drainage out of there. And then this is just a standard picture of a micro excavator. It's just over three feet wide. Where the mini X is almost just over five feet wide. So your typical gate is somewhere around four foot. You got to take panels down if you want to get the mini X in there. If you have a micro excavator, you can slip right on through. So it's a smaller footprint, efficiency, got good gate access. It's preserving sidewalks with weight. There's potential to protect the trees and salvage landscaping. If we're not running over it, some of them will have to excavate. This is basically not running over. An excavating, just landscape. Before you go in to do a job, sometimes you have to demo again. This is roughly some costs that my staff put together. Remove a fence panel, it could be up to $1,200. Removing a tree is not cheap. You have to remove a good-sized tree. Sidewalk repaired, another item that's not cheap if you damage sidewalks or pieces of the patio or retaining wall. And then landscaping, of course, is not cheap. There's a potential on each job to add up to $3,700 worth of additional costs with just using the equipment that we have.
Any instances have you encountered?
We're dealing with one now over on Higbee Ridge. How long do you think we've been dealing with that, Paul? At least a year and a half?
Yeah, probably has been. Is this a regular occurrence annually, though? Different people?
There's potential, there's drainage easements all over the city.
Right. But, I mean, obviously, we've done this before. So how many times, how many occurrences do we have in a year typically?
Removing fences.
Yeah, doing all of the extra work to get, get in there and do this.
It's almost every residential job. The equipment, the equipment just doesn't go back unless they have like a trailer, a swing gate.
Yeah.
You don't get back there. But just a regular man gate.
There's potentially in a year, you may not have any requests.
I don't know.
Or you could have multiple requests.
I've got a workload right now that has at least 20.
And that's what I'm getting to. So you're, you're, these are all going projects that you're doing every single year. You're having to do two, three, four, five of these, maybe more.
So the last three years, what's the average we've paid for all that? Just to rate all that stuff on the slide before.
Our budget is gone every year. That's why we had to increase the rate last year. And we're proposing to increase, increase the rate coming up in 2027.
Can we get that data over time, just so we can see where that's going? I mean, is it more towards replacing people's stuff versus drainage versus, do we, it should be factored in at each one? So we kind of see the data where how it goes more than paying the residents for doing.
We do, we do track in work orders and we do track costs, but I don't know if it's drilled down to that level of purchasing flowers or retrieving. There's a cost for each work order.
I'm sure there is. I just, it was, I know. You detailed it. So I was just wondering if there was something to compare it to, that's all.
So do you rent, if you rent the micro, if you've got?
Every now and then we'll rent one.
And you can't use the mini?
We don't rent it every time. We're removing fence panels.
What does a relic cost per hour on those, or is it like?
It's usually rent four days, get a week, a couple thousand. So the funding source for this, some equipment cost savings on the tax note. $60,000 balance left over. So we'd like to add this as a, as a piece of in the tax note.
Should we start with that slide?
People did bury the headline there.
Corleese parks. We are looking, we're looking at our estimate for 2025 for the park entry fees. We're going to be a little under because the park was closed from January 13th to March 8th for an overlay. because the park was closed from January 13th to March 8th for an overnight project. So we're expecting to collect 400,000 instead of the 645 we originally budgeted. But on the expenditure side?
Beckett. So we're looking at a $220,000 increase on park entry fees, 2026 over 2025.
Yeah, assuming that the parks not closed.
Where's that going to come from?
Well.
I know where it says it's coming from, but what are we going to do to get, you know, almost a 50% increase?
The parks will be open. The, the reason there's a reduction there is because the park was closed. So we didn't.
Twenty, it was closed that far, that much in 2025?
That's what I was like, yeah, I mean, it's like 30%.
From January 13th to March 8th, so for two months.
Did we compare it to, we hear before, the same time of that revenue loss? So that we lost that much in just less than two months?
Yes.
And then of the park entry fees or the park, the pilot null fees, what's the total cost of fees we get for RV overnight rentals?
I don't have it broken out, but I'm just the overnight rentals.
I mean, it'd be to know that if, if we are thinking of spending four or five million dollars to know what, what we're getting back, our ROI.
All right, and then the expenditure side. We have park maintenance and supplies. As I mentioned, there, there is, the 2024 overnight project was completed in fiscal '25, when it was originally budgeted for 2024, so that's crossed over years. We are adding in 2026, bike strikes at Coppers Branch Park. And then we have tree maintenance removal, brush for $35,000.
What are spikes drive?
There are those devices that you put on the-
Is there a picture of it in there?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, they're, they're one way. So like when you go to a budget car rental and you rent a car.
Oh, it's the tire slashers.
Yes.
That's the name, I know that.
Yeah. So why, why we put that in there is because folks are getting around the pay system. By when they exit, a car will act like it's exiting and back up and let a car go through the exit. So we're losing revenue. We've, we've, we've closed the loop on the, on the pass codes by having that Ventec active net integration. So they're, they're getting more and more creative. And plus, we have cameras out there. So they catch folks that are vandalizing those gate arms and go after them.
Can we not use those cameras to see who's jumping the line?
We can now. The cameras went in, went a month ago?
No.
Or two months ago?
They might leave them live in April.
So I mean, is this spike strip still needed if we have cameras out there logging this stuff?
Yeah, because oftentimes you can't, there, there's not a light that shined on the license plate. So this would be daylight. You're looking at nighttime also.
Flock cameras can solve that, right?
Well, the flock doesn't pick up the actual act. What it does is just read the license plate.
How much revenue are we losing a year with these fancy criminals?
I, I don't have that number.
So we have some supplemental requests for the Corley's Park.
Yeah, so this is, are we?
Sorry.
That's all right. Request for an upgrade for the Ventec machine in Coppers Branch Park at Pilot Knoll. We're going, we've gone cashless. And this is the next phase in, in the cashless process is the multiple ways to pay, especially on our Ventec machines. So that's what this is for. Those casts, the, the machines are problematic with cash. We have had multiple breakdowns. We've had to have folks come in on the weekend. It backs up the gate. We get vandalism to the gate arms as a result of that. So this, this right here will mitigate those issues, at least a large part of it.
Phil, do we charge a customer service fee?
Or? The company does. We don't.
So I, I guess are we losing money by allowing them to be cashless? Does the swipe fee go down if we allow them to tap and chip versus the card? No savings there.
Is it going to work?
Yes, well.
Remember John?
We know why that one, we won't go without it.
Actually, actually, this will work for John. He'll just tap or Apple Pay. Time wouldn't work the other day.
It's not gonna, just continuing to say authorizing, 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 and then it invalidates.
Well, it is technology. You know, you love it when you work, when it works. And then, you know, it just frustrates you when it doesn't. So anyway, this just explained exactly, or not exactly, but what I went through. It just offers a different, additional pay options. And it, and it's in keeping with what's going on in the industry right now, folks. I mean, I don't carry cash. I mean, hardly, maybe $40, but Apple Pay, Cat Pay and those folks that.
More impervious to water?
You're way more.
I mean.
You're way more trusting than-
No, you're way more, I'm a dinosaur. I'm a, I'm a, I want to pay cash. If you want to take cash, I don't know.
I'll go back to John's question. Would you ask it again? Because I'm, I'm curious.
Oh, what did he say?
More impervious to water.
Yes.
Because that was one of the things that we found the other day, that water can get into the machine.
Well, that's silly. When it print off the paperwork, he was saying when that paper prints off, you know, there's a little flap that has to be lifted up, you know, to get your receipt.
Oh, that water sets in there.
Yeah, water sets in there.
It somehow gets in behind that flap and
Right.
get papers wet and then.
Sure, there's condensation that builds up in there, but it doesn't affect the
The paint.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make them getting a piece of paper with their code on it.
Right. And that's a receipt, so you paid to get in?
Well, no, I'm just, that was just a comment that was given to us. That was a problem with the chrome machine. Water gets in that tray.
No, he couldn't get in at all, so.
It does.
So this is not going to solve that problem out, though?
No, it's not going to solve that problem. That's a design flaw, an engineering flaw, if you will.
Those are mechanical people, not my people. Not a civil problem.
That's something else that needs to be looked at, though, if it's causing a problem for.
Okay, we'll look at that. So we have a trailer that we thought that was on the replacement schedule last year, and it didn't make it. There was cuts that had to be made, and this was a trailer that was cut. The Fleet Services is telling us it needs to be replaced. And they've done just about everything they can to repair it, keep it safe. So this is a replacement for Corley's Moku trailer.
Oh, I thought you said Moku. I'm like, what brand is that? Sorry.
Moku.
Moku.
I had a little frog in my, get some drainage.
There's a fee for that that Scott can charge you.
The addition of a disc golf course to expand the health and wellness and teen focus program this course will also activate an underutilized park with positive recreation. And we actually have Spencer Wilks. He's, he's, I think he's going to be here tonight, but he's a resident that came to us. I spoke about this in the budget meeting. And he had a great idea for Coppers Branch Park, to put an 18-hole disc course. I've already checked with the Corps of Engineers and they allow those. Very low costs. We're going to partner with the disc golf folks that he plays with. We went out and toured a couple of disc golf courses, one in Flower Mound and one in Lewisville, to understand how the game is played. And it's one of those games where all level, all age groups can play. So it also meets that need for teen engagement that was identified in the in the comprehensive master plan, specifically the parks master plan. And we spent a lot of time on this, making sure that we were making a good decision here. And the good thing is, is that this course can be moved if there's any, if we, you know, decide to move forward with capital programs or capital projects at Coppers Branch Park, we can easily move the disc golf course. It's a, you know, a basket and then a, a tee-off area, if you will, that is composed of synthetic grass and decomposed granite, so.
Why would you move it?
We would just make an adjustment, you know, for like-
Like in the same park or move it somewhere else?
Oh, no, one hole at a time is what I mean. So, so, yeah, not the whole thing, no. So if we put in a boat ramp and it, and it impacts one or two of the holes, we can just adjust the holes somewhere else on the park, so.
And you can get 18 holes?
Yes.
How many, how much land does that take? How many acres?
Let's see, I think Coppers right now is about 100 acres? 100 and, 112? But if you take out Doubletree, the pond, that's part of it also. Probably, I don't know, road and everything, maybe 72 acres.
No, I meant for disc golf, how much rent land, how many acres you need for disc golf? Like, how much land does it take?
I don't know.
You're not, you're not eliminating the use of that land.
Right. I'm just wondering how, I mean, how much it is and, I mean, and it, how much land is being underutilized? And does that cover that spot?
Yes, it covers those spots.
So Phil, the, I'm sorry. The 17.5, it seems relatively inexpensive. How many people did he say he could anticipate? And each of those would have to pay a park fee to get in, correct?
Correct. Or they could park on, what's that, Coppers Branch Road? The neighborhood and walk in over the bridge. Yeah, but if they borrow, buy a park pass for, you know, 30 bucks, if you're a resident, 35.
Teenagers aren't buying park passes, they're parking at the end of the street.
Well, he's not a teenager.
I know, but you said it's teen, I mean, a teen-focused program. If they're the ones using it, they're not buying the pass.
Well, no, it's, it's all ages. But, but it does hit that mark for teen engagement and additional teen programs. And I just wanted to make a note that we're looking at that and trying to hit those things over in the comprehensive master plan. But it's, it's all ages. This individual is in his group or, you know, upper, upper twenties, early thirties. And there's about 11 of them that, that he said he could absolutely get out here to help with this.
So the second question is, this is a very popular sport.
Yes, it is.
And I know they do tournaments.
Yes.
Would this be designed to encourage tournaments here?
This is not a designed tournament-level course. That would be significantly more.
Hey, so they would, this is the equipment and then volunteers that come and install it?
Yes, and we would help them as well.
Yeah. Came out in the other budget meeting. I'm sorry. This is the equipment purchase and then installed by volunteers.
And staff. We would help them.
So it's basically a thousand bucks a hole, that's free labor? Well, except for our guys aren't free.
No, yeah, and it's positive activity for a park that is very underutilized right now because it doesn't have very many offerings. So it's, it's, it helps us not only engagement in, in several areas from a recreation program standpoint, but also we have additional eyes on the park with folks that, disc golfers have great etiquette. They don't leave trash. You know, they, they, I mean, they're just really good folks.
So do we need to re-strap Coppers Drive for no parking? And force them into the park?
Well.
We don't have much parking on there. I know that's not a lot of people, but I don't anticipate, if they can all park on that street, I don't anticipate them going into the park.
Not for, not for pay.
Phil, you said 18 holes, disc golf. I mean, I don't play disc golf, but I know those holes aren't, you know, the cages and the tee areas aren't right next to each other.
No, they're not.
Right? So is this open field area that we're planning to just put 18 holes? Because that doesn't seem very interesting to me. Is it in the trees? And they're like Flower Mound, I think they have a disc golf where it's like through the, through the forest, if you will.
That's, that's-
And they've cleared those areas out. So is the group going to clear out brush under there to form these holes? How's that work?
Not, not, Flower Mound is a unique situation because they also go under a road there. I mean, it's, 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 the terrain for Flower Mound is, is pretty, pretty awesome compared to Lewisville. Lewisville's flat and open. And that's what this is. This is flat and open. So they're taking advantage of underutilized spaces like along 35 to the right, if you're driving in and the pay station's in front of you, that lawn area there. And addition, and going down along the creek.
No, I get that, I guess. But to make an interesting disc golf course, right, they're going to have to clear some brush. Are they going to do that?
No, we're, we're going to do it. Very little brush. The way that the holes are designed, it's going around obstacles.
So is it more in the trees or more in the lawn?
More in the lawn and going around trees.
Okay, so it's not in the wooded areas?
No. It skirts the perimeter. But remember, these are disc golfers, and we looked at, like I said, two of them. Looked at Lewisville, that was wide open. And we looked at Flower Mound that had a lot of terrain challenges, so.
The last question. So this price is just for the equipment, but we're utilizing city staff that would be normally doing other activities within the city, right?
Correct.
So are we incurring additional costs by assigning them to do this? Or is it that we should be including in the cost?
I didn't include that in the cost because we, we have projects that we do with the community that we don't include in the cost, whether it's tree planting, doing a memorial bench, things like this, things like that. So I, I didn't include our labor in that cost, no. How long would it take? Probably take about 45 days. Are you looking at, this is Coppers Branch, correct? Correct. You're looking at both, both sides of Copper, Coppers Branch Road? So like the wooden area by the lake and then the open area south of? Yeah.
Are you going to steer somewhat clear from the shoreline to not hit, I don't know, families?
We're staying away from, when you say the shoreline facing north? Yes.
Where all the people recreate?
Yes, we're staying clear of that. We're not going into there.
So on both sides of Holland Village Road, you're doing north and south? Okay, just more.
Coppers Branch, the road that goes in.
Oh.
Coppers Branch, there's like a north side that's wooded by the lake. And then the south side where we would have Celebrate Holland Village, right? The big open area and then the wooded area.
You're not crossing Holland Village Road. That's crazy.
Just throw the disc right across.
All right, will we, yeah, for sure. Now, is this going to interfere with the boaters bringing their boats in? We got frisbees going in front of them.
No, the hole should stop on either side of the drive, I would imagine.
In the beach area for all those people that-
Staying away from all of that. And that, and that's, you know, I didn't know about this. I've never played the sport, rather, I've seen it. So we actually went out and played. I wanted to understand what the impact was on walkers, other people recreating in a park. And the, the etiquette is, is phenomenal. They, they take their time, they, very courteous, they're not in a rush. It's a very chill sport. And it's just, I don't see any negative side to disc golf at Coppers Branch. And, and, and that was one of my concerns. Are people going to be walking and then all of a sudden Frisbee's going to hit them in the head?
Or driving, you know, driving in.
Exactly.
To go launch.
Sketch of the layout, like?
I do, and I, I've going to see if it's attached to this. This is just some statistics that talks about the popularity of golf, of disc golf. Yeah, here we go. All right, so these are the main components. The tee pads, this actually is going to be on the ground, so we can mow right over the top of it. It's going to have the wooden frame and everything. And we actually went onsite to learn turf. The turf has a 10-year warranty on it under normal conditions. These baskets are, you know, very typical. This is park board members, city staff, now at at Lewisville. Understanding, you can see the trail there. There's a park over here. Understanding, you can see the trail there. There's a park over here. So it was a good, it was a good sight to.
Right off the valley.
That's El Woods, yeah, El Woods. It goes from Kirkpatrick all the way over.
So one more question.
What's the, do you, you don't have a sketch of what it would look like in the park?
Seeing if it's in here and it's not. But I can access it pretty quickly.
So, Phil, the, looking at the map, they've got to cross Copper Springs Ranch Road.
They'll walk across it.
Mm-hmm, right. So are we gonna have to do something to create a crosswalk there for safety?
No, we've got people that cross that road when we had concerts and other activities and, you know, it's, it's, it's not a high-traffic road.
Except for in summer weekends.
Weekends, yes.
We don't use that field for parking for activities at Donut Tree?
We have, but it's not in the middle of the field. It, it skirts the outside.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it leaves this donut alone, this donut hole alone?
Yeah, it, it skirts along the outside of it, over to here, back over to here.
So we're not taking up that.
So you're gonna leave the, the donut hole alone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. I'll send you, I'll send, uh, council a picture of the layout.
Okay.
Yep.
And as Phil mentioned, in Lewisville, I ride my bike through there quite a bit. And, and the disc golfers are, they're, they're very polite. You've got the trail with people walking, you've got a playground, you've got a basketball court. It all works together very well. It does, and there's, there's a number of golfers out there in Lewisville that play.
I could try to throw the thing through your spikes.
I'm glad you don't play that.
We had to do a disc golf challenge for the Amazing Race one here. And thank God my kid knows how to throw a frisbee because the adults really were bad at it.
Yeah, it's not like a regular frisbee.
I know.
It was ugly when I tried to throw it.
It's, it's not fun, but my kids were like, who is this mole?
Say combine it with the dog park.
Come on.
Say combine it with the dog park. Dogs love frisbees.
None. And the bikers.
So, wait a minute, the supplemental, that was a total of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. We would have, um, total expenditures of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three, making our, um, ending, or our increase in fund balance, eight thousand dollars and, and fund balance of one million. Now, um, we had met, um, prior to this meeting with the, uh, 4B board and, um, reviewed the, um, proposed budget, um, for the 4B. Um, sales tax, you know, like with the general fund, we're seeing a decrease from, um, what was actually budgeted. Budgeted in last year about a six-point-eight, um, increase over the twenty-twenty-four budget. And, but in reality, we're just, we're seeing one-point-one, um, increase over the. We anticipate to, uh, collect at the end of the year, one-point-eight million dollars in sales tax. Then we have rental income related to the, uh, Doubletree barn. And interest income. Um, again, um, when, when we budgeted twenty-twenty-five, um, our interest rate was about five-point-three percent. It had declined over, throughout the year. It's about four-point-three right now. So we had to, um, adjust the interest, um, the expected interest income. So our total decrease in revenue for, uh, 4B will be two hundred and four thousand. So, uh, personnel is under budget, just by thirteen thousand dollars. And supplies and services, um, we have, um, and professional, or is fifty-three thousand over, um, budget, uh, with professional services being twenty-six thousand. And supplies and equipment, twenty-seven thousand over budget. So that will give us, or a, um, increase in expenditures of thirty-nine thousand, four, eight, forty-three. And then our ending fund balance at the end of the year is expected to be two-point-four million dollars. So, uh, for rental income, we anticipate for, um, twenty-twenty-six to be at, um, seventy thousand dollars. And for sales tax, um, this year we had budgeted, um, just two percent over last year's budget.
In your last budget session, you were talking about repairs to the, uh, awning, not the awning, but the.
Shade structure.
Shade structure. I don't see any of that in this budget.
The supplementals were, were, um, few on next.
But I mean, why would that not be in the 4B budget? Annual maintenance. That's a maintenance item.
I'm sorry, I'm.
But the supplement for the trellises around the barn.
Oh, the trellis.
Oh, you, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the shade structure.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm talking.
Uh, it's in, that's in there.
Because you had staining pushed out until next year.
Yeah.
But you said there was a lot of repair that had to be done, and I don't see any of that.
It was in there. I don't know if it showed it yet, but we talked about it.
Go back.
Well, it's coming.
It's coming up.
It's coming up. All, those things are coming up.
Under supplementals, under 4B?
No.
It's not, it's under the, um, supplies and equipment.
Trellis is not, but the supplementals.
But the repairs.
Yeah, it'll, it'll show.
Okay.
Okay, didn't get to it yet. Okay.
I'll go back. So it's under expenditures, we have personnel. So we expect, um, wages to go up and health insurance to go up. At the, uh, budgeted, and then our health insurance had a, a pretty severe increase. We're currently, um, under RFQ, you know, get, um, some other rates, see if we can, uh, get a better rate. So under professional services, we have, um, contract leaders, um, seasonal rail, right away, Molly? And then, um, under supplies and equipment, um, it's, uh, parks maintenance is included. So for twenty-twenty-five, we had a repair, uh, concrete damage and trip hazards on the walkway at Doubletree Ranch Park system, uh, trail system. And then, um, for twenty-three thousand dollars, then we had a Doubletree Ranch, um, barn interior painting, um, for twenty-three thousand. We do that every for five years, I'm sorry. And then we had the Bitten, uh, um, Doubletree Ranch Pavilion Trust staining for eighteen thousand. And then, uh, for the vertical interplay, interactive play elements at dispatch, we originally had budgeted that at seventy-five thousand. And then we came, um, after the fiscal year to add another fifty thousand of that. And then we had electrical system upgrades at, um, Doubletree Ranch Park. For a hundred and fourteen thousand. And then for this year, um, we have in the budget, uh, repair trellis at Doubletree, Doubletree Ranch Park. And then adding a foot, a four-foot gate to the splash pad fence. And then we have, um, around eighty thousand each, which is some basic ma- maintenance routine. And then also included in supplies and equipment is, uh, a beautiful patient increased by five thousand dollars. And so, um, we reviewed the supplemental requests with the board, the 4B board, and they, um, decided not to fund any of the, um, supplementals.
We discussed different options. So it's not that they were killed. We asked for additional options to be explored.
So on the, now, for that one, for example, what would be the different options?
To move the handicap parking closer to the entrance to the park?
The, the entrance to the park are on either ends. The ADA, the the handicap parking is in the middle. And they, the proposal was to put stairs right there, right? Which we felt would be a hazard for people, just falling into the. So the idea was, rather than spend thirty-six thousand dollars on creating stairs with handrails, is to look at the idea of moving handicap out to the ends. And, and so they have direct access to the field, rather than having to go further down on either end to get in without hindrance.
Was it, it says a resident requested that. Was it for the stairs near the ADA parking?
They want stairs.
Yeah, if you look at it in the middle, they want the stairs directly across that park.
Yes.
Yeah.
They don't have.
Yeah, the person that, that sent me the letter, they request that. And they're not, they're not in a wheelchair, they're not handicapped. But as Brian pointed out, the entrance is right there in the middle. Uh, you know, everybody kind of funnels that way. But there's a, that retaining wall, which is a pretty big step down, but a lot of people do that anyway.
Right.
Uh, otherwise you have to walk to each end, as Brian mentioned, to where you get the flat ground. But then you come back to that middle point, uh, to go to either, either one of the fiddles. So it was a matter of, a matter of convenience there.
I remembered in the budget meeting, that was thirty-six hundred, not thirty-six thousand.
I don't know.
Thirty-six thousand for a step?
Yeah.
Steps, handrails, everything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian?
You gotta take the wall out, you gotta form concrete steps, you gotta put handrails, you gotta market. You gotta have a landing for them.
And then putting steps right next to an ADA, little additional safety issues. The whole point of an ADA is to not have steps.
Well, that's what I, that's why I'm confused.
It's for convenience, not for ADA, name one ADA route that's for straight point A to point B. They're not.
What was the other?
The other one is, um, the sale over the chessboard. And what the board had, uh, asked is that we go back and look at different options. We had three options. One, cost of trees, how many, and where to plant them, large trees. Um, number two is, uh, putting a center mass and getting that engineered and getting sales engineered for it so that you can use the existing structure that is there. Uh, so we'd have to have custom-made, uh, sales, uh, to fit that, which is no problem. They, there's companies out there that do that. And then three, uh, was to look at, um, some umbrellas, smaller umbrellas, um, possibly around the perimeter. And that was one of the things that you suggested, John. So we're, we're gonna look at those. I'm gonna come back to the, the board later. And if they approve, it'll be a, a budget amendment, or we push it forward to, um, next fiscal year.
Because no one's using chess, no one's played chess in years. And all it is, is a shade structure. So it's more about replacing shade than the actual where it's located.
Right. If nobody's playing it, why do we need shade?
There's a playground right nearby. People use it for shade.
Because of the artificial, yes. We use it for the artificial tur- turf under the shade.
Got it.
But no one's playing chess.
That's what we had proposed. This is a very similar structure that we have all throughout the city that is, uh, very stable, very sustainable. And the next one, we're, uh, one section specifically, but we also looked, we found another section on Village Trail that has poor drainage. And we were asked in the budget meeting to look at something that is more prosperant, different alternative. So we came up with a French drain system that we received a quote on, uh, for uh, sixteen thousand dollars. But these are the two areas, Project B, the main one is Project A, that we, and the council gets, uh, emails about a couple of times a year. So this is just showing the area and where the water stands. Uh, this is showing the actual water standing there and what we've seen. It holds water for approximately two to three days, depending on the time of year. So what we, uh, talked to a contractor about, he's working on providing the detail of it. But French drain is pretty standard detail. You can Google it, find it on, on the internet. But cutting the curb, grinding it down, and then, um, removing the sod, sloping it, going down about eighteen inches and creating a French drain where you would take it downstream to right about here, where it picks up two percent slope, catches this, uh, so it'll go to the street and into the culvert that is pretty close by. And, um, so during that process, um, uh, Councilman Feaster and Councilwoman Hurst had both come up with a different idea, that they even provided a larger cost savings, which is to do a, a sump, if you will, where you still remove the curb slope, but you create a, a rock barrier, put some landscape fabric down in there, fill it. About a foot worth of, uh, three-quarter inch rock. And then on top of that, a larger river rock. So that the water will drain through that rock, drain to the walk rock, and it, it will just, you know, gravity drain all through, uh, basically the same distance. And, uh, they want us to cost that out to see if that's, uh, a more economically viable way to do it versus sixteen thousand, maybe eight thousand. So we're gonna, we're gonna do that, bring it to, bring it back to the board.
Who'd be responsible for maintaining the rock feature?
It'd be us. And we have a lot of them across the dish, uh, the city. We actually, um.
They currently maintain this area.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, I mean, this is just mowing.
Yeah.
Except for the pool guy with really good grass.
Yeah.
Where, you know, rocks would have to be replaced and.
Right.
Yeah.
So we currently mow.
Take care of this part of the trail.
That's part of the trail.
Yeah.
Well, we're sure that's not a sprinkler system, a sprinkler.
Well, someone's pool.
It's, it's nuisance water. It's nuisance water. It's, the plumbing is.
It's a combination of rain and.
The plumbing is more from the nuisance water than raining. It's from sprinklers and all nuisance water. It's, which A gets more nuisance water, B is more rainwater. So if you're always watering, you don't know where.
Both options a lot better than the original one.
Yes, we keep going down lower, seven, eight, sixteen. Yep. Appreciate the direction, too. Uh, this is just pictures of B. It, uh, um, doesn't hold as much water. We're getting no complaints on it. But since we were in the area and they're pretty close to together, I, I felt like it was necessary to also present it to the board, um, and the council. Like I said, we're not getting any complaints. Um, holds less water. Uh, that's after a rain event, right there. Uh, and the decision right now is to do nothing. Uh, you can see some of the work we've done. This white area is where we've taken a grinder and grind down the high spots here and over here. And it has provided some positive movement towards the, towards the drain that is there. That's just to recap, but that's all gonna change.
So, um, this is our recent, um, budget after the. supplementals. We would just maintain our base budget for now. And then this is, we're circling back on the general fund supplementals. Received responses from five council members. So the, the items highlighted in green are the ones that received a three out of five operator vote. So we have the, for the police department, the lock cameras. And the shields and then the Blue Voice AI program. And the Skywatch Tower converting that to a home. And then for fire, we have the civilization system. And the Motorola radio replacements. And the Wildtech, Wildland Tech ear. And the two outdoor warnings sirens. And then for parks, we have the installation of a mini split AC and heating unit at Unity Park and then project to remove the dead trees. And then for recreation, some funding, the permanent team event. And so the total recommended based upon these votes is two point eight six, two hundred and eighty six thousand.
What was the number again, Heather? I'm sorry.
Two hundred and eighty six thousand.
Five of five, five out of five.
I did three out of five. No, we can change that if you want. That was just the
Okay, I just, I missed that part and I couldn't see the number, so, okay.
So incorporating those supplemental requests into our general fund budget. It would increase our loss to two point two million and bring our fund balance down to eight point seven million at a thirty four percent spending reserve.
Can we go back to that list real fast?
Mayor, I have a question. I realize I wasn't at the last meeting, then I apologize, but the drone. When that was presented, was the particular model of drone posed? Do we know what kind of category drone it would be?
It was three different models. It's three drones, one was infrared, one was siren, it could talk to people, but they weren't the gianty ones.
One of them was metal, it goes into
No, understood. So are we gonna, these are gonna be used for public events? Ground control, so are we gonna notify every participant in the city that a drone is gonna be surveilling them at every city event?
Isn't that the one that's on a tether?
You're in public, you have no You have no expectation of privacy, city park and a city, a city event. So if we're flying a drone, we don't have to notify anybody.
I'm sure they'll see, cause one of them was tethered.
Just has some questions, so. Yeah, I mean, I guess government entities are different, that's all I'm saying. I'm getting my drone license, not that it matters, but there are considerations for flying drones over people. The condition or the category of the drone is important, so just, I'll follow the chief on that.
Cause they, they brought up a demonstration during Silver and Highland Village for us to see all of them, but it's for three different drones and
A tethered hold one.
One that'll stay up on the generator.
The rules are very strict, especially over private property. But it's, I think for government, it's looser for public property, but I know private property it's very strict.
And who would operate the drone? The police department, a police officer?
Yeah, they would, they would get a certification in drone operating, but there'd be several that would do that. You could identify from DoubleTree, you could identify people at City Hall. It was that powerful.
Okay, so that, that crosses into, you have to go over private property gets there, so maybe something
Or you could read a license plate over Hickory Creek.
Thank you.
Our budget calendar of what's coming up. In the August twelfth meeting, we will review the utility fund and then consider tax rate and budget amendments. And then on August twenty sixth, we'll have another general fund follow up if needed. And then issue certificates of obligation series twenty twenty five. And September ninth and sixteenth, we'll have our public hearings and adoptions for the budget and tax rates.
That's all?
That's it.
All right, well, the next thing we're gonna do is clarification of consent. Anybody have any clarification on any of the items on consent? Cause there's not anything on action, so.
We can clarify that too.
We need to meet in closed session. And unfortunately, we don't have time. I don't think you've got, you can get that done in ten minutes.
Cause it's not a lot, all we can do is listen, cause there's not much.
Then we will go into session. Section, section five five one four nine four, there's now deliberate.
Hi, PM. Once again, we apologize, running behind again. Seems like we're making a habit of that. I will do better, so. We are, first let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Cox. And we're gonna get started with prayer led by Councilman Feaster and then he's gonna lead us in our pledges.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, let us take a moment of reflection today. We gather today with a shared purpose to serve our community with clarity, compassion and integrity. May we approach our responsibilities with open minds and humble hearts guided by wisdom that seeks the greatest good for all. Grant us the insight to make decisions that uplift every resident, protect the vulnerable and strengthen the bonds that hold our community together. May we listen with respect, speak with civility and act with courage. We pause with gratitude for the dedicated first responders who keep us safe. Our police officers, firefighters, paramedics and emergency personnel. We also give thanks for the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, whose service and sacrifice make our freedoms possible. May we honor their commitment by leading with purpose, fairness and care for well-being of all. Together, may we build a community that reflects the best in all of us. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Is that me dropped or is that someone else's microphone?
Page to Mayor and council reports of community interest. Council, does anyone have anything they would like to share?
Just a reminder that we are accepting applications for boards and commissions on due July thirty first. So if you wanna be a superstar in one of our boards, please apply. All this stuff's online. And as we get closer to school, I know we have one more meeting before Sunday school starts that meeting. So we're getting closer to school. Watch out for the little ones. We have brand new traffic patterns. We have all the Highland Village kids that have to figure out how they're getting to and where and from. So just watch out for our, our little ones and be mindful for the start of school.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. City manager and staff reports.
Mayor, do have a couple of items. First, on August fourth at six PM, we will have a joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Highland Village Community Development Commission. Where our consultant, Haff, will provide a status report on the FM four oh seven trail connection. The meeting will take place in the council chambers and will provide an opportunity for public input. The city is working with Haff to analyze potential trail routes and provide a preferred trail alignment as well as grant funding strategies to help position us for the best chances of grant success. The purpose of the trail is to provide active transportation connections to connect residents and trail users to places of business, schools, adjacent communities and parks. The meeting will also be shown live and available on demand after the meeting on the city website at HighlandVillage.org backslash HVTV and on our YouTube channel. And the Tippecop benefiting Special Olympics Texas will be happening at Texas Roadhouse in Flowermount on Thursday, July twenty fourth, from three, three PM to nine PM to support Special Olympics during their Tippecop event. So police and fire both will be out there pretending to be waiters and waitresses, so we'll see how that goes. And just wanna make note of a couple of new businesses. The marketplace at Highland Village, Grain and Berry and Spice and Tonic opened in June. And there's several new businesses open or coming soon to the shops. Those include Aspen Gift House and I Cryo, which are both now open. Francesca's has moved to a larger location. And coming soon, Drybar is opening July twenty fifth. Wolfgang Dog Bakery and Grooming will open July thirty first. Blue Mercury opening August twenty first. And Warby Parker is targeting the end of August to open.
Can we put on the website? So it keeps going through the scroll throughs, the August fourth meeting, cause nothing's on there except for all it says on the website is special joint workshop. There's nothing else to tell them what that means.
Sure, okay. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, but just again, people, parents, it's a if it's, I mean, I wouldn't know to special joint workshop. I wouldn't even know what that is.
Yeah, we'll be doing some other public outreach efforts as well, so thank you for that.
Okay. Is that all?
That's it.
Visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments tonight? No, okay. Well, we are moving right along. Consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. An item will be moved to the action agenda for discussion if a speaker's request form is submitted indicating a person's desire to comment on an item posted on the consent agenda, and we don't have any of those. Council, there's not anything to move from action, so I will read the consent agenda. Ten, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on July the eighth, twenty twenty five. Eleven, consider resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one ninety nine, receiving an annual report from the Highland Village Community Development Corporation and approving the annual update to the facilities development capital improvement program. Twelve, consider resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two hundred, authorizing the purchase of a dump truck from Premier Truck Group of Fort Worth through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell. Thirteen, consider resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two oh one, authorizing a task order with Schaumburg and Polk, Inc. to provide professional services for the electrical improvements project at the Public Works Building and City Hall Building. Councilman Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. We approve consent agenda items ten through thirteen as read.
Thank you. And Pete Renza, Brian?
Second.
Okay, council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry six oh. Okay. We are moving right along. We did meet in closed session, but there were no, there was no action taken, so we are moving into a late work session item. So we are gonna receive a presentation on results of the safe route to school survey and proposed plan for the upcoming school year. Chief Ryan?
Kevin needs to leave first. Just an update on the, from the city manager on that Texas Tippecop Roadhouse. Flowermount's doing the first night and then the smaller cities, us, Bartonville and Double Oak, excuse me, will be participating on Thursday. So it'll be two, two separate nights. So it's a joint presentation tonight with Lori and I. I'll start it off and bring her up to talk about the survey results. So understand, we started looking at this obviously when I got, I got this thing. December, LST voted to close the schools across the district. Highland Village Elementary is one of those schools with the school reassignments. We already began reviewing options for kids, parents, pedestrian routes. Why? To find those routes, observe potentially safety hazards or make them the safest ones that we could and determine where we can best meet our community's needs at the same time. Our three remaining schools, Briar Hill, McCullough and Heritage, total of twenty three hundred kids. And then the city with Lori's assistance put out that survey asking to identify those issues. Which schools the children will attend, the modes of travel, the identity, to identify pedestrian and or micro mobility routes. Parents' concerns and delay HVPD daily requirements related to pedestrian micro mobility traffic. As a side note, we, well, I'll get to that point when, after Lori.
Thank you. Mayor and council, so chief is right. We decided to do a survey to contact our community and get their input on this. We had a lot of requests from folks about different needs at crosswalks and, and certain areas. So we ran the survey from July, June sixteenth to July seventeenth. It was out for about a month. It was published in two editions of The Villager on all of our social media channels, on the city website. Community Impact did an article on it. And then we also made signs that we placed along the trails in Highland Village and Lewisville with a QR code that took them directly to the survey. We received three hundred and nineteen responses, which we feel pretty positive about. We asked them which school their child would attend. The majority of the respondents said that their child would be attending McCullough, a mix between Heritage and Briar Hill. We asked if they would take the school bus. This is not surprising. Most of our students are not in that two mile eligibility requirement for the school bus anyway. Asked if they would plan to drive their child to school. The majority said that they would. And if they're, if they were going to walk or ride a micro mobility device to school, and it's really about a half and half mix of yes and no to that question. And then we asked if they were walking or using a micro mobility device, would they use sidewalks, trails or the on-street bike lanes? The majority said that they would be using the sidewalk and the trails over the bike lanes on the street. Then we asked an open-ended question, if they had suggestions, comments or concerns. We had a hundred and fifty two responses to that question. I've categorized those by the main topics that came out in the survey results. Crosswalk or crossing guard was a main issue at several different locations. On Briar Hill Boulevard, at DKH, at Highland Shores and at Tartan Trail. Also on Highland Village Road at Brazos and Willow Creek Estates. And then on Highland Shores Boulevard at Hillside. There was also concerns on Rosedale, that there was illegal parking on West Rosedale. There was no sidewalk on that street. It's a narrow street. Cars are parking on the driveway or on the street and sometimes in people's driveways. And so the residents were saying that it was precarious to walk or ride a micro mobility device on that street and they would like an additional crossing guard. And then in regards to Heritage Elementary, of course FM four oh seven and Barnett was a concern. There was a left turn, questions about how they could safely turn left onto FM four oh seven, which right now is not allowed. There was a request, of course, for a traffic signal, which we've heard plenty of which we've heard plenty of times in the past. There was concern over people using Main Street through the district to get back left instead of going down, making a left turn out of 407 or going the other way. Minimal walking space was a concern to Heritage Elementary, and they requested more school zone enforcement in that area. Police presence, they asked for an increased presence on our trails, enforcement of the micro mobility rules, and enforcement of the school zones. So, those were the main topics. Chief, back to you.
I did not want to steal Lori's thunder for putting all that effort into that. So, thank you. Our current crosswalk locations, Briar Hill, Rosedale, Briar Hill at Sugarloaf, McAuliffe Elementary South Loop, Briar Hill at the Inland Trail, Briar Hill at Shannon, and Tartan Trail at McMurray. The places of interest, which we're already identified, we identified these before Lori's survey, this should be no surprise here. Number-one location, Highland Village Road at Willow Creek Estates. Number-two location, Briar Hill at DKH. And then, third, Highland Shores, a community center, which we used to have a crossing guard there also. Just see, also, some background on our crossing guards. When I, when, we have always, well, last few years prioritized our crosswalks, and Highland Shores, a community center, on the priority list was the last one. So, it was the first one, if we were missing a crossing guard, that was the one that we would pull, always because of staffing shortages.
Yes, sir.
Before you go on, when you say at DKH, there's already a Highland Shores trail with crossing and signs. Are they talking there?
Yes.
Are they talking down at?
They were talking at the existing one, since it's already a common, common passing.
Well, that's, I was just wondering, because that's already marked. So, it's that place they're asking for a guard?
Yes. Not a new, not a new learning curve, so to speak, since the trail, since it's already there. We just have never posted anyone there because we were further down towards the school. But with the influx of kids cutting, or maybe using that trail, we thought we'd look at it. And I would add, too, just because the presentation is here, we have a very fluid or flexible thought process with this. In our first few weeks in going through this process with a heavy presence of monitoring, we can switch and will switch if we believe it's necessary at that time. So, there's your answer, John, to that question. Since it's already utilized, it'll work out really well. Highland Shores, the community center, as I previously said, we used to do this. It was our first one that we would pull because of staffing requirements. There was not many kids ever who crossed there to begin with. And it's traffic control, device-controlled. I know it's a tiny, excuse me, tiny map, so to speak, but green, our existing location. The two stars would be the additional locations.
Do we have any indication of the number of children that would be walking, or the increase in the number of children that would be walking or taking micro mobility devices that live east of Highland Village Road?
No. So, we intend to, with our crossing guards as best we can, and the police officers out. So, the first two weeks of school, we, we really roll out the army, so to speak. So much that even on the first, the first day of school, and I think the second also, we don't even allow vacations. So, our, our normal staff that day is out, and then the administrator folks up to, including me, there's six of us who we go out to do that, and then our crossing guards on top of it. Even we'll have Wes participating this year as a, we use auxiliaries on that day also. We request them. So, put them all out and try to keep a tally for the first two weeks, just to see what's going on, and then compile that data and adjust on the fly if necessary, or stay if it's, if it's meeting those needs. Yes, sir.
Sorry, before we get too far, so you mentioned staffing issues with crossing guards. It's staffing and not a budget issue as far as manning up?
I have a slide for the, for the, let me get to that one and answer that one. Yes, ma'am?
Just a side note, the kids on my side of town, they're all going to Heritage, and I think they're all, they're all, all the parents have said they're, they're either busing or being dropped. There's nobody walking on, that heads to 407, that I know of in my side of town. Now, my mom's house goes to McAuliffe, but my side's going to Heritage since it's on 407. The parents have even gone, this is sad, they are giving their kids' cellphone now because they're, they may ride the bus, which they weren't going to until middle school.
We're just going to monitor.
I know. It's just...
So, chief, I have, and you may have, you may address this, but I have a just quick question. I'm not seeing anything here at Brazos and Highland Village Road.
We're going to, we discussed that in the past also, where we will actually put out an officer or an auxiliary there. We don't want to have it a fully staffed position yet. These were the ones that were the top ones on the list, and since it's got a light all four, I'm sorry, traffic control at all four points, the traffic, the pedestrian traffic, both kids walking, adults jogging, and/or micro mobility, it seems to work very well with the buttons and the lights and following those rules already. So, we'll place someone there to just ensure, and then more than likely, after the first two weeks, we'll just retreat from that position.
Because I think that the kids that are in, on the east side, that went to Highland Village Elementary, that will go to McAuliffe, especially not like, like Rhonda was saying, where the dividing line is, they would come here. They won't go down to Willow Creek and cross at the, at the trail. I don't see that happening, but they may cross here and then go take the trail, but I can't see them going down and then crossing. So, it's just something we need to keep an eye on.
Right. I don't have any statistics to say how long we watched, but it was input from our officers and just people at that intersection saying, "It does not appear to be a problem in the summer," okay? So, we'll watch and adjust if we have to.
Well, and a lot of them may be driving their kids to school.
They probably drove their kids to Highland Village already. A lot of the parents drove.
Yeah.
So, I have to use that term full-time. They're all part-time employees, okay? But we have five positions that we used to staff up until this presentation. I lost one on Friday of last week with some health issues. He had to retire. So, as it stands, to fulfill this obligation that we presented tonight, I need six total. So, I need two more, which has already been advertised as of yesterday, to try to fill those spots. If it's to be funded for another body, it's about $7,000, which before all this, it was, you never seen it in our budget presentation. Even though they fall under the police department, we never had to really look at the budget stuff because it's partial-funded by Denton County and some funds from them, and then rest by the city. This, I will assure you, we've never been over-budget with our crossing guard, ever. We're about $3,000 to the good, even if we fill everything this year, if everything was full, we're down to right now. So, I'm not really worried about it. The only thing I may have to ask is if we do need somebody else or another position, we really find a need for it, I'd come back and say, "Hey, we need to fund one more crossing guard position."
Well, I know somebody's going to be retiring soon, and...
It's two hours a day, 230 days a year.
Yeah.
At $15 an hour, until after you climb the ladder, then you make some more. So, recommendations, cover Willow Creek, and then cover Briar Hill at DKH. Monitor others for the first two weeks of school and keep a tally. Educate the public on safe pass to school and location of crossing guards. We're not asking for any new school zones. Pretty simple, pretty explanatory.
I'd just like to make a comment. Agree 100% with the one at DKH, because, again, I've been going there for seven years. You made that crossing. I would consider downstream, putting lighted crossing signs up there, something with a flash, okay? Because when cars are completely backed up trying to turn into DKH, which they back up every morning, okay, and then that gets people blocked going south on that, it becomes three cars wide when you're trying to cross through there. And people don't see crossing signs. So, even a guard in there will be helpful. But just downstream, something to light those signs.
I'd like to second that. He's, he's right. I've been through there. In fact, I've almost hit him crossing there, because you can't see. There's so many cars on that road, and there's so much going on in that location.
Yeah.
So busy that you just don't see everybody.
And then you add those additional kids from Highland Village Elementary, and those parents trying to get to drop off and stuff. It is going to be even, yeah.
I think the, I mean, I'm just going to say with the crossing guard, a good crossing guard there, highly visible with the signs, should impact it, especially with the uniform police in that first couple of weeks. And what we've seen every year is the same behavior in the first two weeks of school. Everybody doesn't know what the heck's going on. But after that second week, it just sort of falls into place. So, then things become more of an anomaly than a regular occurrence.
I applaud this. Thank you.
To add, just to let you know that the Willow Creek, the trail, that's actually the dividing line. So, you're not going to get any kids on the south side of Willow Creek Trail, because they're all going to Heritage. So, it might not be as busy as we think, because you're only pulling a neighborhood or two.
Right. But the reason that one was staffed primarily is because of the speed on that road. I mean, to try to slow some cars down, and even though there's a crosswalk, it's just, we didn't, safety was the primary reason.
Oh, I agree. I'm just saying that your numbers are probably what mayor says is going to be more Brazos, because once you get to the Lewisville side and the south of Victoria, all those kids are getting bused.
We will keep track.
In light of the recent conversation about the roundabout on Highland Shores Boulevard at Hillside, I noticed there was some talk about that in the, in the presentation, but it wasn't presented at the end. Is, what was the discussion regarding that Hillside location and a crossing guard there? Because there is a lot of kids that cross there because of the pool.
We've never staffed it, so it's never been an issue. And with the four-way stops, I just, again, it wasn't, far enough out that it was not a concern.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for doing the survey. That helped. And it was a great response.
Yeah, it was a good response. We received about 180 emails that we didn't currently have in our database. So, we'll be adding those. And then, we will also be following up with, "This is what the plan is. This is where we're going to be," to let people know what's going on.
Well, and I would encourage everybody to be patient. It will be crazy. It's going to be different. First two weeks, like the chief was saying, of school is always, always crazy.
Yeah.
Even if Highland Village Elementary was open, Highland Village Elementary's drive-thru would be crazy. So, please, 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 to the general public.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Be patient. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, we are going to get an, receive an update and discuss proposed Pilot Knoll Park improvements. Phil?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Okay. So, I was asked to provide an update from the last time that we met, specifically from Councilman Kixmiller. And we met yesterday and reviewed this. So, I hope that I've captured everything that was discussed in this, in the meeting yesterday. So, the request for more information due to concerns about the cost of the water and sewer upgrades and the return on investment. So, we have an agreement, a draft agreement was sent to Dean Construction last Tuesday, and I'm expecting to have it back by the end of this week. This is just showing that in 2016, prior to even cabins even being thought of, that Public Works was working on getting costs for sewer and water for the park back in 2016. Of course, the cost was significantly less than what it is today. So, request for, excuse me, the number of recorded repairs to the existing water and sewer lines over the past two years. And that's, you know, since we brought up the work order system, this is the data that we could capture. In 2005, for water, we had eight work orders totaling 104 hours. In 2024, 10 work orders totaling 168 labor hours. And on the sewer side, in 2025, we had three work orders totaling 68.5 hours. In 2024, one work order totaling nine hours. And in 2023, we only had three work orders. I think that's when we started ramping up the system and capturing the data. It totaled 6.5 hours. Yes.
Phil, is that citywide? Is that specific to the areas we're considering?
I'm sorry. It's specific to Pilot Knoll.
Thank you.
Yes. This whole presentation is an update about Pilot Knoll. So, everything that will be in here will, will be specific to Pilot Knoll as it relates to the project for the cabins, the day-use area, boat ramp area, gatehouse. Yes, ma'am?
How much additional money did each one of that, did they go over budget, or how much more per year was, did that time outside of, I guess, work hours or whatever affect the budget?
Yeah. We don't have that information here. I can work on getting that information. And to be honest with you, I don't know if we've captured the labor hours with, the overtime labor hours with the work order system. I just have to spend a little time looking at that. We had to data mine this. The categories that, we had to pull these from was general maintenance. It wasn't specific. So, there was a lot of labor hour that went in there looking for Pilot Knoll, specifically water lines and sewer lines. But we will do that. We'll, we'll try to get you.
That would be helpful. So, we're knowing, is it during work hours? I mean...
I can, well, I'm not going to speculate.
Do your best.
Yep. So, what is needed to continue park operations if the cabins are not built? Replacement of the two-inch water line with a new two-inch water line. Replacement of the septic system that services the RV restrooms and showers and two park RV slips and the dump station.
Go back.
Okay.
Where's the two-inch water line? I mean, is that like the entire water line?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, just putting in perspective, that's the entire water line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the, the septic system, just to follow along the same train of thought, it goes from the, the main line for that septic system goes from the restroom in the RV park and loops its way around to the existing dump station that is not too far from the, from the gatehouse. So, if you remember, we have three separate systems out there right now. One for the gatehouse, one for the RV restrooms and showers and slips, and then one for the So, the gatehouse, a new gatehouse, a renovated gatehouse that addresses workplace safety. Right now, our staff does not have an exit strategy if something ride or bang happens. We've spent a lot of time and effort making sure that staff that are here and also at the DeValle Center, to make sure that the service counters are hardened and things like that. This isn't the case at the gatehouse, so that is a concern. Construction to meet current building codes, including ADA compliance. There's no ADA access in there. The restroom is not ADA compliant. In addition to that, all of us would have a very difficult time using that restroom. It's very, very small. We do need added storage right now. We have, you know, they're using the floors and wherever they can to, to store administrative things and other things that they have to do for the gatehouse operation. And then, we need to improve the service counter area. We need to do it much like what we have done here with utility building. Something like that would be, would be great. So, on the same theme, address ADA compliance in the day-use area, including pavilions and shelters. Replace the electrical to the large pavilion at Big Oak, put it in conduit. Remove the shelters that are flooding after significant rains. Replace the roofing on a few of the shelters and pavilions, and then renovate the sand volleyball court.
So, I have a question, Phil.
Yes.
Remove the shelters that are flooded after significant rain events. So, I know that we've, we've seen pictures where those, all we can see is the roof lines. Why would we remove those? We just, the park closes, right, when it's, when it's flooded?
No. We would look at those that, you know, if we get, let's say, six to seven inches of rain, and there's about, right now, there's probably about five shelters. We removed one upon the corps' request a few months ago that just aren't functional under, you know, minor rain events, if you will. And we would get rid of them.
So, you're meaning like the roofs leak, not it's underwater?
No, they, they flood when the lake comes up.
Right. Well, that's, that's, those, everybody, that's, they were, everybody knew that. But you're saying a rain event doesn't make the lake, it takes a while to build up. So, if you're saying a rain event, is that they don't function, does that mean when it's raining, the water leaks in?
No, not when it's raining. It's...
So, it's only when the lake's full?
Well, when the lake rises.
Right. And, and it goes in the, which...
Due to rain. Mm-hmm.
Right. But when they were built, we all knew that. Are we moving them to high ground?
No, we're not removing them, we're not moving them to high ground. We're actually removing... No, we're not removing them, we're not moving them to high ground. We're actually removing them. And we're going to invest on the ones that we know that will function and will provide ADA access to a few of them. We'll upgrade the amenities that are there. It's, you know, we're, we're just going to put more emphasis on the one, ones that we know we can program longer, if you will, rather than the ones that we have to clean up debris on that are getting damaged, if you will, because the lake water gets so high that it compromises the existing roof structure that is there. The decking on it, the shingles, things like that. We have, you know, we just have problems with, with about four of them that we feel that need to be removed because of the amount of maintenance that we have to spend on it after flood events.
What, what ADA compliance in the day-use area are you talking about?
One, improving parking spaces. We, we have very limited parking out there to shelters and pavilions. So if you look at Big Oak, when you first come into the day-use area, there's, Big Oak is on the left. And they have an ADA parking space. They just put a sign in the ground, and that doesn't make it ADA compliant. We need to find, we need to be able to provide a clear and safe route that meets the federal and state guidelines to get from the parking lot actually to the pavilion. So we don't have that scenario at Big Oak. And we need that there. And we need it out over a percentage of the shelters that we have there as well. So that folks that have mobility challenges, wheelchair walkers, whatever it is, if they're at a family event or, you know, just wanting to recreate, we need to, you know, provide that access to it and the parking space to go with it.
That's all of pavilions?
No, there's only a percentage of them that we need to do. So moving on the same theme, new lighting for the boat ramp area to address the safety concerns. The boat, the current lighting, at least two to three of the poles that are there flood. And we have to, when that happens, go turn the breaker off. And that kills all of the lights in that area. So we want to move those out of the flood area. And we also want to do solar lighting in that area rather than your traditional electrical. And then make the improvements to the boat ramp area, including a new courtesy dock so it can be used during periods of moderate flooding. And then move and modify the existing courtesy dock and add a non-motorized watercraft ADA launch and add an ADA parking space for that ADA launch.
What is a non-motorized watercraft?
Kayak, canoe, things of that nature. It's just standard terminology in our, our profession. That's how we distinguish motorized, our boats, if you will. Yes.
I guess I don't know how to ask this. I'll just ask this. Some of these options don't seem like they're requirements to keep the park operating. Some of these things seem like these are nice to have, right? Improvements to improve park operations, but not requirements to keep the park operating. Is that fair? Like a new sand volleyball court or adding a non-motorized watercraft ADA launch is not necessary, but it's something we'd like to have. Is that...
We have the, we have the volleyball amenity out there right now. And I feel that it's necessary for programming to draw more people in, just like what we have with the kayak vending machine and some of the other programming elements that we have out there. It's a park amenity when RVers, day users come and use the park like a pavilion, a shelter, things like that. It gives them something to do while they're in the park. And it also, from a water experience, it adds and enhances to the park because it, volleyball is, is associated with a, a water recreation experience. So from a park and recreation professional standpoint, because it's there, I, I feel personally that it is necessary. It's something that draws people to it. Teenagers play it. And we have, we already know that we need to add additional programming for teenagers based off of the comprehensive master plan. And this is one of those things that, that hits that.
But I guess, just to be clear, those are enhancements to increase offerings for our citizens, which makes sense. But it's not strictly required to keep the park operating.
It's not a required element. Correct.
Whereas the water and sewer improvements may be a requirement because we need water and sewer, those are required.
Yes.
Some of these are, we think we need them or want them, right?
Right.
I just wanted to be clear because the way this is framed, this is what's needed to continue park operations. So some of these items I don't necessarily consider are needed, but we'd like to have them. So I just wanted to be clear that...
And that's a valid point. But I think, Phil, those were included in the, the bond program as improvements that were going to be done.
Correct. And I didn't put all of the improvements in there. But I looked at it from a user standpoint, a need and a desire from the community. Mayor, you were, you were there at the public meeting for the boat, boat dock meeting, and we had a very good show out, our turnout. The ADA launch, well, I can tell you personally with hip replacements, man, you look at ADA differently when you can't walk. And so I, my perspective on ADA parking spaces, accessibility is completely different now because of my own personal experience. So when I look at something like that and I see that we have a boat dock for someone that does not have limited mobility challenges, I feel like almost Title IX, that we should be able to provide or accommodate something also for that same program. And that, and that, you know, it's a personal thing with me. Is it required? Well, if you're handicapped, you're going to have a different narrative. You know, if you have, if you, if you struggle walking, you're going to have, your, your narrative is going to be completely different.
No, I understand that and I appreciate that. It's just the way this is framed, I guess I'm trying to just clarify for myself on what is required versus what is desired, I guess. And it sounds like a lot of these options are, you know, new boat ramp, right? Well, the boat ramp we have may not be great, but it's not hindering operations, but it would enhance operations, right? So I just want to be very clear that I'm trying to clarify what is needed to continue park operations versus what's great to have or already in the bond or what we'd like to add. So that was, that was it.
And thank you because I believe you're also right. I could have done a better job clarifying it. If we're looking at just essential things, it's water and sewer. Those two things.
And none of these things are necessarily, cabins are not, all these things are going to happen, right?
Maybe.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's what's being presented here. If we don't pursue cabins, this, all this stuff is still on the list.
That's right.
So tying it to the cabins isn't even necessarily relevant. This is just park improvements.
If I can add a little context, part of the genesis of this, I think the last meeting, we all saw the big numbers for sewer and water. They were big numbers.
Is this last meeting I missed?
Two meetings ago. Big numbers. So the question was, what's our existing park operation to keep it going? What do we need? Forget cabins, just status quo. Let's break it out so we know what's our investment going to be required. Then if we add cabins, there's an add-on to it. You got to break the two of them out so you know what your cost. So the quest, request was, if we don't do cabins, what do we still need to do? Sewer, water, these other things? That way, we can understand our true incremental investment that are tied to the cabins. Okay? That was the piece of it.
No, and I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to say is there's almost three categories, right? There's what do we absolutely have to do?
Oh.
What do we like to do? And then cabins, right? That, and that's, identically, that's what I'm trying to establish.
But we have a grant for the boat, for the boat ramp.
Yes. We have a planning grant and once that is approved, the construction grant gets approved. And I confirm that with Texas Parks Wildlife Department. It's a period of a few weeks.
Right. And having that courtesy dock close to the boat ramp.
Is a huge...
I had never given any thought to it. I don't launch boats. And so, but when we were there, somebody pulled up to launch a boat. And you can see, you, if you're one person, you back that boat in, you get into that boat, yeah, your truck's parked there with the, the trailer until you get into the boat and move it over to the dock. And then you get off and you have to run back around. And it's, I can see where, on a busy day, that's going to stack up. People trying to, to put boats in the water. So, but then, of course, the safety concerns with the, the lighting, that's, that's a have-to. You know, because it looks like, I mean, we're planning that this lake's going to flood every year or every other year. For whatever reason, it seems like that's happening. And if we're going to remove some picnic tables and shelters because of the flooding, then we need to look at the fact that this new lighting, you can see where, we saw where those poles would be with a little bit of rain, would be in the water. So those...
And that's my point, right? So in this giant list of things, what is safety-oriented that we have to do, like moving electric out of water, right? Or what's risking our operations of what we currently have, which is the water and sewer? And again, I, we don't, please continue. I'm just trying to establish that there's three categories of things here, not necessarily just, all these things have to be done, right?
Right. You're right. And I appreciate that clarity very much. That helps me as well and understand...
I mean, they're all great. I just, you know, they're not all necessary or needed, right?
Right. And, and, you know, we went in great detail yesterday talking about this on the one-on-one meeting and trying to capture everything between the back and forth. And, but yes, I appreciate that.
Quick question.
Yes.
With regards to the boat ramp and the parking, how many boat slash trailer slash trucks can we fit in there? Do we have any indication on that?
In the parking lot? I don't have that. I do have the spaces counted. But I know that one of the things that came up is that parking lot is, is, does not accommodate the larger trucks and larger boats. So there is, there is a plan. We've talked to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And it's, you know, we're...
It's not as many as you think.
Yeah.
Have you been there before where I've actually seen, like, it's so full that I've seen vehicles parked in the grass as you're going down?
Yes.
And our boat ramp can only handle one boat at a time, correct?
Right.
Are we missing out on getting people to launch from Pilot Knoll? Because we have restricted parking, we only do one boat at a time?
Yes. And, and we have identified that as a need. And actually, you know, we're, we're hoping to, that in our asphalt projects that we have, we have 200 and, 200-plus thousand dollars every year for asphalt programming. And Scott is the one that manages that for us. He, he did addition, he did asphalt upgrades this past year. He's fixing to do some more at some other park sites. And that is one on the list that we identified as a priority. And I already started to have conversations with the Corps of Engineers to expand the parking to accommodate the, the volume of boaters. But it, it is a very popular boat ramp.
What about widening the boat ramp so that we could launch maybe two at a time instead of just one?
A future grant. This grant, and that does not cover that cost. What we looked at was, you know, current operations, safety, ADA accommodations. How can we have more opportunities for folks to launch boats during, let's say, a three-foot elevation change in the lake, which, three to four foot, which causes us to close the boat ramp right now if there's an elevation change within... I can't remember, don't hold me to the three or four foot, but I can't remember what it is. And with some modifications that is proposed in the grant is to add curbs and then add Chevron signs so that folks, when it's flooded, they, they're still able to safely launch their boat. So we're, we're using what we have there in place so we can have more launch days.
Could we go back a few slides, please?
Sure.
Go back to the, oh, sorry.
Yeah. While you're looking for the slide, here's one.
Tell me when to stop, John.
This particular, is it, is it not isolated to Pilot Knoll? Isn't this a, a problem that we could see at Copper's?
That you can solve?
Is this a problem you, we can, we would see or have already seen at Copper's as well, that would, that would have to be improved?
We did make the improvements there.
That one's done?
That was done. Yep.
Okay.
Several years ago.
Yes, it was. Yes, sir.
I wanted to go back to this slide. When we look at the amount of work orders to maintain the current water system, over two years, there's 18 work orders, 272 hours over two years. On the sewer, seven work orders in less than two man weeks of effort over three years. But yet, we're looking at investing hundreds of thousands of dollars. In the case of the water, over a million dollars for work orders of 18 and work orders of seven. That's where I was trying to get to the numbers, you know. Data has to drive that kind of investment. And I understand maybe a catastrophic failure, but I don't see numbers here that say we have a huge issue, at least it's not here. I'm just saying it's not evident to me that these numbers warrant that kind of investment. This is, you know, forget about adding cabins, okay? This is existing operations. So I think that's something that I would want to see more empirical data that says we need to invest that kind of money. Okay? And I, I don't see it from the work order standpoint. Maybe I'm missing it. Don't ask you to answer it right now, but I just think this is a piece of it. And with this piece, it looks very, very light. Okay? I'm not certain that you would make an investment in your house if you had a couple plumbing calls that were over a three-year period. So that's my only comment.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the sewer at Pilot Knoll, is the sewer in the flood zone area at Eniport? And with that being said, how old is it, number one? Number two, what is the risk of failure during a flood event? And what is our exposure to contamination in the lake?
All very good questions. And of course, it's, it's all relative to what John just made. You know, at, at his home, if he gets eight work orders in one year or eight breaks at his house in one year, that's not enough. But someone else, if it's a service interruption and you're paying for something and your water's being shut off and you're having a recreation experience, you're interrupting that service for several hours and possibly even a day. So when those, when those breaks do happen, it, it does, it can leach into the lake. It causes an environmental hazard, although it may be low-level. It's in the flood plain, especially the sewer line. And when the, we do experience breaks, the staff has told me that when the water recedes, it does pull the line with it and it can cause a break. So we try to cover it up every year. Or we, actually, we do. We'll go and we'll bring dirt and we'll cover it up and pack it. And then as the, as a line continues to get exposed, you know, we try to, we just try to stay on top of it as much as possible. So that's a, it's another thing that's not being shown here. So there's the work order system, like I said, it's capturing, you know, part of the data. We haven't, you know, we're still working, bugs out, labeling things to make sure that they're labeled correctly. But there's a lot of other things that are associated with the work that goes on, renting equipment, calls on overtime, things like that that, that aren't factored in here. Yes.
One, two things. I get there's spillage, but we have INI all over the city that runs into the lake. So that's a, I mean, that happens. And on Lake Louisville, there are so many, you can have septics in the flood plain everywhere. And Lake Louisville has a ton of them. So, and they have, not that it's good and not that it's bad, but from a operation standpoint, just like we have INI that goes into the lake with our manholes and all, and we're replacing some of it, but we still have INI and manholes pop. But having a sewer, septic system and a flood plain is absolutely normal, absolutely acceptable. And we have to work with our, does Leslie at the county, what does he say about all of that? Is our, have we passed our sanitation checks? Are we with our OSSF? Are we in compliance? I mean, if we're in compliance with the county and they regulate OSSF, how are we with them?
From what I understand, we're fine with them right now.
Okay. Because that's, every septic owner on Lake Louisville has to comply with. Leslie is the guy I work with, he's great, with OSSF. And so that's all factor in. So just, it's normal to have that in. I mean, that's, that's part of having septic.
Right. But, but the real question is, and it's understandable that it's normal, and we see it everywhere. But what, what risks do we have with a break? That's my concern.
Yeah, I agree.
If it's a total break, we've got more than just an... If it's a total break, we've got more than just an isolated event, right? You've got a lot of sewage that potentially could leach into the lake. What is our exposure to that risk-wise?
And do we have similar risks with our other sewer lines around town as well?
Correct.
And this system, someone had, I think it was you, um, Councilman Feaster that asked how old, maybe, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but, um, the, the plans that we were able to, um, that the Corps provided us were 1966. So that's what, 59 years old roughly, right around in there. And then, um,
That's not old.
Yeah. We don't, we don't know exactly when each, um, leg of that septic system went in. There's, there, there's no plans. We went and, you know, just as a sidebar, went and visited with Grapevine and, uh, the staff at the vineyards who manage it. And it's, and folks that have park and recreation land along Lake Lewisville, they all have the same story. There's no records, you know, uh, they're constantly, when they're digging something, they're finding new things. It's just, it's just part of managing core property lakes. So we don't have that information. The Corps does not have that information. And oftentimes, um, uh, you find things by accident.
But we have OSS certification, so it is operating within current regulations, correct?
As far as.
So it could be old.
But in this case, if you, we have a, we have a leach field that we didn't know about until recently. So that's not been monitored.
So we, um, I've got a couple of slides that are going to speak to that. If I can get, if I can get to them, I think it's going to answer some more questions. So Casey, uh, KBC Engineering, um, gave us a quote for three septic systems. I, I happened to stumble, if you will, uh, across this engineer in talking to one of the service individuals who services our septic system. And he was the one that made the statement that the, he was servicing the RV, uh, system and said that, uh, it needs to be replaced. And of course he wasn't an engineer. So I said, okay, well, how do you, how do you determine that? And, um, so we, he gave us this contact information from, uh, KBC Engineering. And this individual does, uh, septic systems all over the state of Texas. So he gave us a quote, um, for engineering, which, uh, the RV restroom dump station, two park manager slips, a 6,400, gatehouse, a thousand, uh, cabin designs for 16 to 20 cabins, $5,000 and then travel to the site back and forth for the projects, provide some oversight, $3,200 totaling 1,560. But where this really takes a, a turn is based off of similar, if you will, size type projects that he's done and his educated guess. The cost to build these, uh, the RV restroom dump station and two park manager slips, a new system is $240,000. Uh, the gatehouse is, uh, $25,000. And then the cabin design for the septic system is 110,000 totaling, if we did all three of these, 375,000, which is a significantly different number than three or the, the two-point, um, whatever the, the cost was for the new septic system. Um, so of course, um, I have references that I still need to call. I have site visits that I need to, I need to perform. And I, I asked, what is the difference between, um, you know, uh, your, if you will, a public works design system and a, and a septic system because I don't know. And he goes, well, it's, it's designed for residential and to be attached to, you know, a much larger system. The design, if you will, principles or processes are different than designing a septic system. And in my meeting with, um, Grapevine earlier today, they also said the same thing. They are different, um, as far as what is needed and what is required, um, between the two. And I didn't know, um, but I found out. So.
Clarifying. So if you take the, you know, if someone's putting an estimate out without doing the engineering, that's a little iffy, but, uh, take it for its face.
Educated guess.
Would be 265,000 without cabins. Just to put, that would be to take care of the old system.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just trying to put apples to apples, that if we didn't, if we didn't do cabins.
Right.
Take care of what's there and replace everything that's there sewer-wise. They're thinking in the range of 260.
Yes.
So weighing that.
Again, that's an educated.
Educated. I mean, we've asked people, give me a, you know, a finger under the wind, a thumbnail, and we take it for what it is.
Right. It was like the first, second slide, the opinion of probable costs in 2016. There wasn't any engineering to support it. It's pretty standard, but I mean, we, we know it's a, it's a mental number based off of the individual, the engineer's experience in doing work like that, but it's not a hard number.
Yeah. I didn't want to address the 2016 number. That's a different discussion.
Okay.
But no, I mean, this, part of what I'd asked is, and this gets closer to it, is if we don't do anything new on the investment on cabin, okay? What do we need to do to keep the park open? Even if we assume that the numbers of maintenance, so don't.
Aren't where they need to be.
Issues would not warrant big investments. But even if you made that leap, this is what we'd look at. Okay. And then if we decided to do cabins, find we can afford them, then knowing what that add-on would be, would be in the 110 range, if, if it holds out. Just wanted to be clear. Okay.
Thank you for that clarity.
Don't hang your hat on this number. I'm always afraid when somebody puts a number out, then it's always going to go back to, well, remember you said it was going to be 260,000.
But this is not covering all the line, is it? This is just the septic or does it include all the gathering lines? Cause the septic, the contain, you know, the septic system, you got to get it there.
Yes, this is the lines to it. This is the lines from the restroom to the dump station.
Okay. So it includes all the lines and the septic.
The dump station.
Yeah.
Aerobic system or elite, or whatever the current code is.
Yeah. They've gotten a much more sophisticated in the sense of you can literally order them off a truck. So the cost of septic has gone way down.
I mean, there's one line from down at the, uh, the showers.
Yes.
There's one pump line up to the septic. So that's one single line with a, with a grinder pump in it. So that's the long line. All the other lines are up top. And you said this would be aerobic.
Is what I'm, well.
Or would it be leach field?
No, uh, leach fields are no longer from what I was told.
I'm just, just asking. Okay.
Depends on the soil. Leach fields are allowed. It depends on the soil report.
I'm out of my element, John, here. So I'm just being honest.
And we don't know what he had proposed for cabins because they're going to be 16 spread out. So we don't know what that is. Okay. That's, no more questions.
Okay. Okay. Is that, is that the end of it?
Uh-uh. Yes.
The end. Look at there. Can anybody else have any more questions?
What are the other two slides?
Where is KBC located?
They're based out of, um, here in Texas. He, he just moved. He had a house in Denton and he's having one built right now. Um, and I checked their credentials on the, with the Texas Department of.
TSP?
Yes.
But yes, I'm just trying to find out, do they have a website? Where are they at? Cause there's.
And, and like I said, I haven't, I haven't called or anything like that. I'm, I'm going to do that later this week on the references.
And can I, I just want to throw this in because this was initiated between, at four o'clock, between four and five o'clock yesterday afternoon, when John and I met with Phil and, and Paul and we kind of asked, you know, we, because this is something that John's been asking for, um, and to get these numbers. Um, and so this helps tremendously. I appreciate this.
Good.
Of course, it's, to me, they're guesstimates.
Yes.
It still worries me, but, um, but at least now, like John has been saying, we can separate out of, into different buckets. And like Robert said, the have-tos, you know, the wants and, um, and then the safety issues. So, but I, I appreciate this. There is one more slide. I don't know, is it a, a map or?
Oh, that was part of the 2016, uh, quote.
Okay. Well, I, I just, all right. Well, I, I do. I appreciate this a lot. I think.
You bet. You bet. Thank you.
And I guess we'll see that comes again. We'll see more of it. All right. Um, Council, status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything?
I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna, um, we talked about the police are getting drones or they budgeted drones and all. I would like to put on a council future agenda that we need to discuss a drone privacy policy that limits the surveillance of our citizens and private property because knowing that I can have a drone at Doubletree and see all the way to City Hall is wonderful, but it's everything in between that bothers me. So I think the city needs to have some kind of policy because we don't need to be surveilling our citizens unnecessarily and our, and, um, it's just good, good practice.
Okay. Council, does anybody else have anything? No? Well, with that, if nobody else has anything, we are adjourned at 8:51.